Okay, thank you for inviting me first off.
Sure.
Basically, I've been doing this type of work already over the past decade. I started here, I came here in two thousand nine and I've been helping residents since I got here. Once I found my community, because I'm a military brat. I moved a whole lot of different places, but this is the first place that I called home and found community. And just fell in love with the place and the people. And I just had an incessant need to give back. Um, especially during covid and during covid, I distributed a lot of food and just resources for people to get their rental assistance, help people get their PPP loans, you name it, I did it. They were kind of amazed with me because I even have food on top of the roof of my car. Cause and not just to people that were on the list, cause there were lists of people that needed help. Um, there were people that didn't pick up food, so much so that I had to take two and three trips on most days. Um, my sons helped me, but we just went throughout the city, people that are, you know, are elderly population, people that were too ashamed to be on the list. Uh, we went everywhere for like hours, uh, passing out food to everybody that when I remember more than a couple of times, we passed out food to like a whole apartment building. Everybody got food, um, and it's just who I am as a person, um. Not to get super religious or anything, but uh, for my church that say first to serve. And so I believe in that heavily.
Which church is that?
First AME.
I was gonna say that.
So when there's something to be done and they need help, people need help, the first one will say, okay, I'll help you. Doesn't matter whether I like somebody, don't like somebody, if they need help, that's what you're supposed to do.
So if that's your, your personal motivation for serving and getting involved, that could take a number of different paths, right? Like why, why city council?
Well, I'm already involved with rent control and I see.
You're on the rent control board.
I'm the chair of the rent control board. And I see so many different things that cannot be tackled from the rent control board itself. That is out of the purview of the rent control board. That people need help with, they need help with code enforcement, they need help with even getting access to resources. And the number one main reason is homelessness. A lot of our residents are frustrated with homelessness and people in the alleys, that and crime. I can't take care of either one of those things from the rent control board. Um, there's so many obstacles for people to be rehoused or even for them to get on the list. Uh, my neighbors that were my neighbors like two or three weeks ago, or even people that I took care of during the pandemic are no longer in those places. When they talked about the eviction tsunami, we're here. So people that used to be your neighbors last week, this week are displaced. They're out on the streets, they're in vans, they're in campers and some of them are you are suffering from drug addiction. So my heart goes out to them because of course, your neighbors do what? When you need help, they help you. So now it's my turn, I have to give back.
Okay, so homelessness and crime, cool, right? I, I, I fully anticipate literally everyone is gonna say homelessness and crime, right? Like that's what, that's what everyone's gonna say, right? That's what everyone thinks the issues are. So what? We'll take, we can go in order, I guess, you wanna, we can start with home, well, let's start with rent control first, cause that's, you mentioned you're on the rent control board, right? So we've got homelessness and we'll go into some crime stuff, talk about some, um, those little bit. In terms of being on the rent control board, what about that experience has qualified you or ed- helped educate you or given you an experience or a knowledge base that you can leverage at the city council level?
Well, it's not necessarily rent control board that's educated me, I'm a public policy institute graduate. So I've been trained on public policy, I see other things that are outside the scope of the rent control board. Not so much the things that are within the scope, the things that are outside of it.
So I guess maybe I should rephrase that question, I phrased it poorly. Is there something at the rent control board that you were, that has elevated your knowledge of Santa Monica? What about the rent, what about your experience in rent control board has taught you something about the city that you didn't know? Was there a, is it a person, could be a thing, could be a policy you didn't know about, right? Like something?
There's always something to learn from rent control board. Even as far as like how things are written or loopholes for people to get evicted out of their homes. Or things as far as like when a new owner takes over and then there's new rules and those new rules could get somebody displaced. You know, and then trying to rehouse like our very vulnerable population is the people that are elderly or disabled. And I've seen both get displaced because there's loopholes within the law. And we have to follow that law. This is it, here's the line, you gotta be right in between it.
I get that, like rent control board doesn't make laws. So, but city council does make some. So what kinds of laws, rules, policies, procedures would you like to see the city council implement? That would address some of the things that you saw at the rent control board level?
So, you know, they're separate.
Yeah, absolutely.
They're separate, so I couldn't implement any laws from city council that would control anything with rent control.
Not the rent control laws, but you could put in, in, you could put tenant, additional tenant harassment laws in place, right? We could, the city council could pass rules and restrictions that specifically increased tenant harassment penalties for seniors or disabilities. Or perhaps the city council could look at incentivizing development for senior affordable housing. Right, like, so I understand the city council doesn't have the purview over the rent control rules. But I guess what I'm trying to get at with these, these questions is figuring out where you see the city council's role in addressing some of the problems that tenants in rent control experience?
Well, that purview would be code enforcement, because people are frustrated, there's not enough code enforcement officers, we need more of those as well. So, and I think it should be separate, I think the residential part of it should have different forms of code enforcement officers. I think that our commercial buildings should have a different form of what code enforcement officers, because it causes us to have a lot of delay. So if we separated it, you know what I'm saying, these code enforcement officers go only for the commercial buildings, these for residential? It would speed up things, number one, and people wouldn't have to wait as long. So, we can start off there and move on forward, because as the homelessness takes place and people get put into that system. Do, are you realizing that when people are unhoused, that, you know, the first ones in priority are the people that are from Santa Monica?
Right, so this is, this is the city's uh, P, PSA, priority, P H S, right, priority housing. I'm forgetting the acronym now, there's four groups that are in our priority housing list. Santa Monica residents, people that work here, homeless people that have been, been here for five years and homeless people that cause a lot of problems. I mean, we call them high users of services, but like that takes the, that, the, the reality of that is that's folks who use uh, nine one one systems a lot, they get a high number of E M A, E M T calls, police interact with them a lot, like I mean, these are my words, but it's a squeaky wheel situation.
Yeah, it gets the.
So those are the four, right? Great, and you happen to have, I know, except for state landmine here, but like, this is a thing that I have a particular B M I bonded about. But like, we don't know how many people are in each of those four groups, we have no idea how many of those people are Santa Monica residents.
So let me explain to you why, and the reason why I know, because I was unhoused. I was unhoused with three kids and I was working as an Uber and Lyft driver. Could not get housed, get rehoused rather, because I was a gig economy worker and the system's not set up for that. It's only set up for nine to five, it's antiquated, it's old.
When you say the system.
And, and when I say as far as intake, in other words, there's requirements, things that they want you to have. If you're working, they want your income to be on a what? A W two, they, you know, I nine.
This, this is the priority housing.
But I'm saying this also is reflective of that, because you want five years of residency. How does somebody that's unhoused have that? How do they have proof of that? If you're moving from pillar to post, how do you do that?
Well, I mean, there's a system for that in Santa Monica, I mean.
The, the system is flawed.
I'm not saying it's not, but, but I guess this goes back to one of, I guess, leading to the point I'm leading at here, which is homelessness is a huge crisis here, it absolutely is. Everyone's gonna tell, all candidates are gonna talk to me about homelessness, people out in the community care a great deal about homelessness. I would argue that we as a city don't actually have a good grasp of our homelessness crisis. I don't think we have a good, I don't think our point in time count is particularly representative of how residents feel about homelessness. It may or may not be actually representative of the number of people on the streets, cause again, it's point in time, one night, one night only, right? I think there's lots of issues around this. And one of the issues around this that I think people are interested in is the notion of why do we have so many homeless people in Santa Monica? Like, I think that's a fundamental question folks have, and I think that leads them to want to know from candidates. How are you then going to reduce that number, right? But I think it's, you have to start with why they're here first, and then you can talk about what you're gonna do to alleviate that. And the housing, the, the priority housing list, I think is part of this discussion, because one of the questions is how many Santa Monicans are being made homeless on any given day, week, month, year? Like, how many people does this city make homeless versus how many homeless folks travel here for something? Services, weather, what, what is it?
Or trying to escape downtown Los Angeles.
So, so I guess that's a question, that's one of my questions for you is, how do you, do you have any concept of how many Santa Monicans are being made homeless? Like you said, you've had, you've lived this experience, so like what do you think that, what do you think that percentage is? Like, our last point in time count had like, what, seven fifty, seven hundred and change people? How many of those people do you think were made homeless here from the city of Santa Monica?
Well, the demographics, if you wanna go by demographics and data, show that most of the people that are unhoused have been unhoused here. So you say seven hundred and fifty people, I would go for four hundred.
You think four hundred of the folk, of them are, were housed in Santa Monica?
Well, see, there's certain things that people don't understand. Like for our, our market rate housing, they have these one-year introductory specials that are so beautiful, we love those. They say they have an apartment for twenty-five hundred, right? You move in, a year later, that, that's for your first year, and they give you a couple of months free rent, goes on the back end. Guess what happens at the end of that year? The next year, your rent is five thousand.
Yep, I mean, I saw those deals, I didn't sign them, but I saw them.
But some people have signed those deals and they thought that, okay, you know, we'll kick that can down the road. And they get there at that year lease, guess what? Now they have to have somewhere else to go, within that year, the rent has climbed up. And they're desperately looking for somewhere else to stay. What do you think happens at the end of that year? And they can't afford that five thousand?
Sure, I guess my question around, do I, I mean, I don't think it's that high as a number. So we know that the priority housing list is only seventy-six, seventy-five, something like that. It's like seventy and change on the priority housing list, right? That's the number that are there. Of, and even if there were a whole bunch of people, as you say, who are unable to qualify for it because like gig worker thing kicks them out, or there's various reasons why people don't qualify. I guess one of my question, one of my thoughts around that is if someone could afford twenty-five hundred or three thousand dollars a month and they, their rent suddenly becomes five thousand dollars a month.
That puts them on the list as well.
Well, but they, they could all then go find another three thousand or two hundred and fifty, like, there are other apartments in the Los Angeles area that rent for that amount, right? Like, so it doesn't seem to me that folks are being made homeless because they're, they, they can afford three thousand dollars a month in rent. Even if they can't afford that in Santa Monica, they should be able to then afford that. El Segundo or, you know, some, yeah, somewhere else.
You said they should just go and move out of the city.
Well, I mean, yeah, if your rent is increased and you can't afford to live in a place, but you ha- can afford to live somewhere else, like to me, that's not a, I guess, to me, that doesn't seem like that's a, a cause of homelessness, like when I could not afford to live in a city, I moved to the adjacent city, like.
That's the core cause, I'm saying one of them, one of them, because I have seen people become unhoused because of that.
And they were then unable to find other apartments.
That were affordable.
That were within their price range. And so, so then what do we do about that then? So what's your, so you're, if you get on the city council, right? So then what do you do about that?
So technically, under the, what you said, they're eligible for being on the list, right? They're eligible to be on, cause they're Santa Monica residents, they're low income, cause anything here, a hundred, hundred thousand dollars, you're low income.
Is that, is the income rate based, I'd have to double check that, cause I know low income is a percentage of, of average, right? Yeah, but I, I just don't know, I don't off the top of my head if it's factored by Santa Monica or the county. I just don't know that off the top of my head, but I, I'll, I'll trust you on that.
Yeah, so, but there's other factors, no one's looking at domestic violence, no one's looking at, you know, as far as that being one of the factors for people to fall into homelessness, and once you have domestic violence, most of the time, that means women and children. So, what kind of help is provided for them? They have to be able to go into the systems that we already have existing. And once they go into those systems, guess what? They're moving them away from Santa Monica as well, because they don't feel like they're safe. Their attackers will know where they are, cause we're only eight point three square miles. And some of those women that are in that domestic violence situation don't wanna leave everything that they know and everything they love. So they don't get the help that they need, we need something else as well for them.
So I, I guess I'm gonna keep coming back to, sure, so we've got sojourn, right? We have, we have a shelter here that's specifically for, for domestic violence survivors. We used to have the Y W C A, which also had a program affiliated with this, we don't have that anymore, that, that organization couldn't sustain itself. So if you get onto city council, how are you gonna address that problem? Like, what are you, what policies, procedures, laws, what are you gonna do from the dais that's gonna address that problem?
So, as a representative from the National League of Cities, I don't know how many we have here, but I know that I'm one out of all the candidates, I'm one of the representatives for National League of Cities, and there's monies available from the federal government for that. I'll make sure that we get those monies, why? Because I'm also a trained grant water, to make sure, because they train us all through N L C to make sure that we can obtain that money. So what my, one of my other focuses will be in obtaining money from the grants that are available and try to figure out ways. And as far as homelessness, I'm gonna go back to homelessness, I'm sorry. Because when people look at homelessness, all they look at are the people that are on the streets. They don't, it's layers to this.
Absolutely.
And I don't think people really understand that.
No, I hundred percent agree with that, right? Like homelessness is a multifaceted crisis, right? Absolutely, there is. The homelessness that residents interact with, see, and that, that disquiets people is the small strata that is the most visible and then the most disturbing and also the most violent, right? Like, it's the homeless people who, homeless guy that stabbed the security guard at my former building. Homeless guy I watched try to beat a guy to death in front of my building, homeless guy tried to set fire to my building, like this was all in the course of a year. Like, there is a class of homeless individual who is problematic. Those are the folks absolutely that drive the public perception. And I agree with you, people don't fully grasp that layered, right? Like your situation, someone who's not out there uh, beating and stealing and robbing people, but just trying to get by.
Trying to get by and also still contributing to the, to the community as a whole, even while being unhoused. So, that's a whole nother situation.
But we get, we, this leaks, this links the homelessness and crime conversations a little bit though, because our police department, two thirds of the people our police department arrests are homeless. Like, that's the number, out of everyone we arrest, two thirds of them are homeless.
And guess what? They're out before they, in their shifts as well. So that's part of the issue too, they feel like they're doing a catch and release program.
So, how are you from the council going to address that? How do you peel off? Yeah, how do you peel the layer off that causes the problems and cater to and serve the individuals who, who need the compassion and service? Like, how do you separate those two groups?
So, we have access to Prop one dollars. We need to access those dollars and also I propose something from downtown Santa Monica where they have a van that has all the access of all the different beds that are available for those that need those those types of services that are mentally challenged, I'll say it that way to be tactful. To take them where they need to go, now.
To take them voluntarily or against their will?
Voluntarily.
Well, cause against their will is fifty-one fifty.
There are some, some situations where we need a fifty-one fifty hold. Is when people are dangerous to themselves or danger to others. And that's a psychiatric hold. Where they hold them, and I can't remember how long they hold.
Yeah, I mean, there's an evaluation period where you, they get determinations about what's going on and, and that, that's, we have, that's usually a police action. So, I just wanted to make it clear, so you're not advocating for an additional, some sort of therapeutic transport van that includes a psych officer to fifty-one fifty people? You're advocating for a mobile service provider that would provide information and would have some ability to connect people directly to services?
Well, so the van would do two things, and this is what I propose from downtown Santa Monica. It's not just that it would provide services, they would take them, the ones that are fifty-one fifty holds and take them to a psychiatric place, you know, center, for them to get assisted there. But where we had ran the problems were, and they said they were gonna, the city said they were gonna fund that, but we needed seven days a week. And not just Monday through Friday, during the working hours, because that's not when everything takes place. It's really a shame that it's not taking place as we proposed or even as the city said initially how it would be, I don't think they have the funding for it.
Yeah, so you're, so you're here, you're, so we have something called a therapeutic transport van, right? That's what you're referencing. Which is the county's program where they have a psychiatrist or psychol, I think it's a psychiatrist in the van, they have a mental health worker in the van. And they can respond to mental health calls and alleviate the stress on the police department from responding to those calls. And to your point, it doesn't function twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So, you're saying increase the, the hours for that van?
Not just that man, have more than one.
Uh, so of us, of the same type?
Is the same type.
Got it, so, great, that would do something for mental health services, how do you fund that?
We're going back to those Prop one dollars. The Prop one dollars that Gavin Newsom made sure that we had. Basically, it was a restructuring of funds, the way that he came for Prop one. So, we need to access those, those dollars to make sure that we can get more than one van. So, I, that would mean the expansion of the conversations I've already had with Gavin Newsom about affordable housing. To then also say, hey, look, you see this problem here, you see we're on the news repeatedly asking for help, because we have to work from a multi-layered system of homelessness, you have to also tie in the county. You know what I'm saying? You have to also tie in state and federal government, because we can't do this all by ourselves.
No, but this also goes back to what I was going to with the housing priority list and the Santa Monica resident thing. Because let's say we get a second transport van, awesome, we absolutely need it. Let's say that transport vans are wildly effective and they're able to link people to services, take them to wherever they need to go.
But it's an open bid, because that's another issue as well with unhoused population. Because we've prior to, you know, the van coming out, people would get the information and say, okay, now you need to go over here. Now here's some bus tokens and go over there and there's an open bid for you, if somebody gets there before they do because everybody's seeing that same open bid at the same time, they don't get the help.
I get that, but let, let's say this all works out, let's say that all works out. We transport X number of individuals. X plus three come into the city the next day. Like, I guess that, taking people out, connecting people to services, absolutely, right? We need to do that. But if you don't stem the influx, no outflux makes a difference, right?
But in those partnerships also, as Karen Bass is working with the homeless population, she's getting them help. Then you also have to make it where people that are in these shelters, because certain people are in the shelters have to be out of the shelters from eight to whatever time. They tell me that they can come back, in other words, go out and be productive, you take a shower here, but you gotta get out of here. You gotta figure out something with yourself between eight and four. Now, between eight and four, we're getting some of these people with downtown Los Angeles coming on the train. I remember those conversations that we were having about, oh, it's gonna be great when we have the train, we're gonna be able to go down downtown Los Angeles. We had no idea at that time how bad homelessness was gonna get. And just as easily as we could go downtown Los Angeles, the people that are on Skid Row can come down here. And so we have a lot of problems of influx of people, that's the reason why they have the tap to exit program.
Right, it's a new program the county's put in that says you have to tap your card to get off the train.
That took a year to put into, into existence.
And it's a county program, it's Metro's decided to do that, and they could stop deciding to do that at any point, right? They shouldn't, but they, we can't force them to do it.
We cannot force them to, but at the same time, there was also discussion about taking people and making them get off the train prior to exiting in downtown Santa Monica.
Yeah, put them off at a different stop.
Which is seventeenth. In the residential area. You sure, no, because that, that increases the crime.
But I'm saying that's, that's what, that's one of the ideas, is like, yeah, put them, but they're still in the city at that point.
Yeah, they're in the city, but it also has a rise in crime as well. Because they're now getting off in the residential area, so now, what's happening now is we're seeing more crime, we're seeing more human trafficking, we're seeing more, you know, things that I've never seen before in Santa Monica, I've seen on Figueroa, but I'm seeing Figueroa behavior on like seventeenth in, you know, Michigan or seventeenth in Delaware, I'm like, what is going on here?
So, so this comes back to my question of what does Santa Monica do about that? How does this, how can the city council do something to stem the tide of folks? And the train is certainly where they're coming in now, but I would argue that pre-train, we had buses, like, to be perfectly blunt, homeless individuals can walk if they wanted to walk, like the, the, the train is the current easy access point, but it isn't the only access point.
No, it's not.
And one of my questions for folks, I mean, you'll see as much questionnaires, like has Santa Monica made itself a magnet for regional homelessness? Have we done things here that unduly draw folks to this city from other places? And if we have done that, what can we change about it? And that's kinda where I'm going with these questions for you, it's like, we're on the same page, that folks are, we need to get people services, right? But if more people come in and go out, that doesn't actually help us as a city. So what can we do to uh, upstream, to stop folks coming here to start with?
Downstream, not upstream, downstream. And that's the reason why I said, mentioned Karen Bass, cause we need to be in partnership with the surrounding people, these surrounding cities, I'm sorry. That we work with them and say, hey, look, when you let these people out of their, you know, their temporary shelters, that have somewhere for them to go. You know what I'm saying? Have some structure, it's not just, okay, you leave from eight to four, eight to four, you need to be somewhere else. It needs to be restructured in a way that they have something to do and somewhere to go, not just let them loose, okay? Here's subject, excuse my French, the way I put this is bad. Let's say Oliver. Oliver, Oliver's, we letting Oliver out, you know, pushing Oliver out, Oliver needs to be at the job center. You know what I'm saying? Between this time and this time, or Oliver needs to be here, but something needs to be taking place on a daily basis so that people can secure that shelter. You know what I'm saying? In other words, you make them kind of work for their roof over their head. To give them something to do, because you just let people go, as they say, idle hands of the work of the devil. Not to put it, you know what I'm saying? I'm sorry if I sound kind of crazy.
No, it's not crazy, I get where you're coming from on that, but this, so, when I bring this back to what the city council gonna do, what I'm hearing from you is partners. The city council is gonna go to Los Angeles, Culver City, West L A, wherever, we're gonna go to the people in our surrounding communities and say, hey, folks.
We need to come collectively together.
Can you do, what can we work with you on to prevent this, this transfer to us?
Because that's also an issue as well, because when unhoused population goes to a neighboring city and they kick the can down the road, they say, okay, we push out, oh, look, we're clean, no, you just push them over to the next neighboring city. Unless everyone comes together and works together collectively, it's gonna continue to be the same. Just like what happened in Hollywood years ago, where they busted the ambulance drivers, dropping off people that were unhoused from the hospitals with IVs still in their arms.
This is still going on.
Dumping, Santa Cruz County, my parents live up there, just passed a law preventing dumping of folks, so like, I get that. Um, we're gonna get some of the topics, but I wanna get into, to talking talking to other communities about partnerships, great. Why are you the candidate who's gonna make that happen? Like, what is it about you that's gonna el- eliminate? What is it about you that's gonna allow you to successfully execute those partnerships? That either the current, the current candidates running don't have, or to be blunt, the current council members don't have, right? Cause if it's as, see, it doesn't, partnerships don't sound that complicated, it seems like you pick up the phone and say, hey, let's work together, right? Why are you gonna get that done and other folks haven't?
Other people don't know how the homeless live, cause I've been there. That's the difference. You can say, okay, we're gonna work in partnership and you have ideologies. But if you don't have lived experience and you don't know where the people are hiding, or if you don't know how things are going out in the streets, or how people are, you know, living, or even how human trafficking is going, because I worked for being Uber and Lyft driver. They were running human trafficking through Uber and Lyft, nobody even knows that. There's certain experiences that I have that the other candidates don't.
Got it.
And not only that, but I also have the experience working with the National League of Cities, so I know the resources that are already here. That's, I'm already doing the work, because this is what city council members do. They get the resources from National League of Cities and they represent us.
And so, similarly on this top theme, but like transitioning a little bit, um, you know, you were endorsed by the police and firefighters, right? And so, clearly, the folks who are engaged in the public city, who are frontline with dealing with a lot of this crisis, they think you're one of the best, right? They endorse, they endorse the group, right? You're in the group, you're one of the best candidates to, to address their issues. What was it about your policies or your ideas that appealed to them? What was it that you think you were able to bring to that endorsement that secured it from the police and fire unions?
They've seen me and my journey, who do you think helped me? The police department did, they helped me with my journey as far as me being unhoused, and I'm also a domestic violence survivor. So I'm not just a person that survived homelessness, I survived domestic violence as well. So, when you start talking about homelessness, they also have an H L P team. And that H L P team reaches out, I've seen them in their work as a board member for downtown Santa Monica, I know that we need more of that.
It's homeless liaison program, right?
Exactly it, but we need more of that, we need more of those officers that can take people and get them off the streets. Because they have to develop the relationship, cause you can't force anybody to leave, but at the same time, when you develop the relationships and they trust you, then you can convince them to take advantage of the services.
Do you think, so I get all of that.
And wait, let me also say. And wait, let me also say this. For the fire department, nobody knows that the fire department is working more. Their resources are being depleted as well for the unhoused population. They've come out, I think I've called them over twenty times myself. Um, seeing people that are unhoused on bikes, and I don't know if they're alive or dead. So that means the EMT services has to come out and check. And whose resources are they depleting? Because they need more, they need their resources replenished.
And so, so when we talk about all of this kind of stuff, I guess brass tacks, do you think the city needs? More, do you think the police department needs more laws or the tightening of existing laws? To provide them with more tools to, and more tools to address homelessness? Do we need more laws that either outline outlaw stuff or tighten stuff? Do we need more officers to just boots on the ground, talk to the folks we have? What is, what, you know, where do we go in that public safety discussion?
I think we need a combination of all three of those things. Last night, for example, I was at a candidate's forum for. The League of Women Voters, and they were talking to the school board. We get out there and, uh, you know, everybody's trying to find a place to park. They're having a party outside. Um, with all the things they say you can have. And I'm not saying that they have to, you know, come and ride roughshod. But as this party's taking place, there's somebody on the side of the Virginia Avenue Park shooting up, using drugs. Right there. And they always talk about Reed Park. Nobody talks about Virginia Avenue Park, because it's been going on for years.
Yeah, it's everywhere. We literally saw it, literally, no exaggeration, every single day at our old office. We're now here on Main Street. It used to be at the corner of Fifth and Colorado, right across from the People Concerned Shelter. Literally every day, we literally had an incident where we had police officers drive by while people were being sold drugs and doing drugs. And just like, keep driving, like, it was constant.
Because if you don't see them doing it. And they they don't see them, like, how do you know they're doing drugs? How can you tell? And if the officer don't see it, guess what?
Yeah, it doesn't exist. But but so this gets into like, so we need, if we're gonna tighten rules and laws, I'll elaborate on what that. If we're gonna increase the number of police officers, what what's the number you think we should have?
For ninety-two thousand residents, we should be way above three hundred.
Being above three hundred?
Above three hundred. Because I don't, I don't feel like we have enough officers on the ground, boots on the ground right now. Now, you have to realize that I'm one of the people that's, that nearly missed the shooter at the college.
Oh, the SMC?
Yeah, SMC.
Ten years ago?
Yeah, I was here. So, you know what I'm saying? I've been in bomb threats. Active shooters, lockdowns on the schools before they start shutting down the campuses. You can't tell me, as even as a candidate or even as a parent, that we don't need more police officers. You can't tell me that.
No, but but three hundred is is above three hundred, I think, is at the high end of the scale. We're at, we're two thirty is roughly our, roughly where we're at. We're budgeted for, I think the chief has said two fifty is where he would like to get to.
Yeah, he said two fifty. And I'm like, at least three hundred, at the very least, at the very least. He says two fifty, because it's. If we have another disaster as we had at the college, I want us to be prepared.
So, this comes back to my question before, how do we pay for that? I mean, I'm not saying we don't need it or we do need it. That's a big number. Like, so how do we pay for that?
I I actually gave the police chief some information that I got from the federal government for them to hire more officers. You know, so for them to onboard and get more officers. The problem is, is how do we get people that want to do the job?
Yeah, but we also, I mean, so when you say information about the federal government, so you think there are federal grants or federal money available?
I think, I know.
That will, that will pay for those ongoing salaries, right? Because it's not one-time cost.
I understand that.
Twenty, thirty years of expenses.
Yeah, I understand that.
So I, you see, there's federal money out there that that we can go.
It depends on, so it's federal money out there that we can access for those dollars. And people say, well, wait a minute, you know, you you wanted to be a police state? No, I wanted to be safe. You know what I'm saying? When you can't see your children go outside and you're not worried the second they step out. Or even go, or even as far as the mental health services that we need back to Prop one. You know, those mental health services, because we have somebody running around the city naked, um, and masturbating in front of kids. You're like, mm-hmm, like.
Yeah, a homeless naked guy threatened to fight me over at Shoops. Like lit, like, I mean, I I I'm I'm only blasé about it, because I've been through this so many times, like.
What about the guy that's running around spreading feces everywhere?
Yeah, like, I had a different homeless guy threaten to fight me in Target, like, because he didn't like the fact I was on her phone, like this. Like, I'm not disputing that these are huge problems. I guess my attitude around it is like, I've lived and dealt with this. It's like, like many residents have, right?
And they're exasperated.
Yeah, the the the, we agree, I think everyone agrees, we need something done. Um, I come back to this federal money question though, because this comes back to one of my earlier questions again, which is. If there's money sitting at the federal level and all you have to do is apply for it, why haven't we applied for it? Why?
We don't have a grant writer. That's one of the things that we need. See, because when people got laid off, the four hundred people got laid off, one of the people that got laid off was the grant writer.
So, just for folks who don't realize, when when COVID hit, the city shrunk.
Prior, prior to COVID. I think it was.
I think those layoffs were like twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, right?
Twenty nineteen.
I think there were, so yeah, it was in that timeframe. The city shrunk its workforce dramatically. There was a huge, a huge.
Or the blip, as they call it.
Yeah, there was a huge shrinking. And so when you're saying in that, we all, we also in that, in that, um. Loss of jobs, cut our homeless, uh, czar.
I was just about to say that.
Like, that was one of the positions that we cut.
Yeah, exactly. That, that was one of those dire positions. That was a drastic cut that we shouldn't have done. We shouldn't have done that.
We've since, city since rehired that position, we should say. Like, there is someone who's like.
Yeah, but eh, not the.
It's a slightly different, but there's someone who's now in in that role. Um, but, so you see, it doesn't have a grant writer. So, that seems. I guess I struggle with the note, because that seems like such a simple fix. It seems like if there's a big pot of federal money, that somewhere inside the police department or the city, someone would look at that and be like, oh, I. I fell out of form for this. I write this up, like, I've seen the city hire consultants for any number of tasks and outsource all kinds of stuff. We outsource legal services, we outsource hiring services, we outsource all kinds of stuff. So again, I I guess I come back to why hasn't the city said, well, if we can, there's enough federal money to hire ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty officers. Five percent of that would pay for a grant writer to do the grant, like, why haven't they done that? Like, what's the holdup? I get you.
That's not a question for me. That's not a question for me. I'm not currently on the council. Remember, I'm I'm applying to get on. But that's a very good question, because as we're strapped for cash, guess what? You need somebody out there constantly looking for it, constantly looking for grants and monies that we can ably access easily. Because we were very successful. Julie Russ got us millions of dollars.
Do you think the current council is competent? I mean, because that seems like a competency question, right? So like, broadly speaking, you look, you you're a resident, same as I am, you've been here a while. You look at the makeup of the council over the last four, six, eight years, because it's not any, it's not like this is a one-time problem, right? This is a building. So, when you look at our current city council, like it's the current configuration. Do you have confidence in our current city council? Like, do you think the current city council is capable of addressing the tasks that are before them? Because some of the things you're saying seem to me suggest they're not, right?
Seems like common sense, you know, common sense. I'm not gonna go after folks for not seeing or maybe not being able to, because it seems like a kind of low-hanging fruit. You know what I'm saying? I think there's some key positions that were let go that shouldn't have. And these are the reasons why I think that we've arrived to where we are. And if you're gonna go to competency, we've had people that were competent before, but they didn't see the value. In the people that they had already working for them, and they actually let those folks go. So, I don't think it's a competency thing. I don't think they have the vision to see it. That, hey, this is a key person. We shouldn't let go of this person. Homelessness czar. We shouldn't let go of this person. Grant writer. We shouldn't let go of this person. So here we are years later, we've kicked the can down the road, say, okay, we're gonna, we're saving all these dollars. And only for the, for lawsuits to come in and wipe all that money out anywhere that we save. Or even, you know what I'm saying?
Like the Yule lawsuit and that kind of thing?
Exactly.
So, I mean, we'll transition to another topic here, because this opens the door for just a question. I want to get, we we want to get, talk about more than just crime and homelessness. But, so the Yule settlement, again, for folks who don't realize. There was a horrific sexual abuse scandal at the Police Activities League, longtime city employee. Wasn't actually a police department employee, but a city employee, um, molested or or, you know. An untold number of children. We never had a trial, so we don't have a full accounting, but that settlement has. Is hun- I don't know if it's plural, hundreds of millions, I'd have to check.
Hundreds of millions.
Yeah, have to check the most recent number.
I think it was two hundred and thirty million they cut a check for at one city council meeting that I was at, and I was like, oh my god. And then subsequently.
Right, there's been several others since then, yeah.
And they're still advertising for more.
So, huge amount of loss there, absolutely. The other, I would argue, large legal fee that the city is, has yet to pay but it's pending, is the district, districting lawsuit, right? There is a lawsuit, um, currently pending that would force, wants to force the city to move to seven districts instead of at-large elections. So instead of voting for three people and four people on a staggered system, you'd vote for your one council member every four years. We don't know how much that lawsuit's cost the city, because they haven't fully disclosed all of it yet. But it's been a, it's gone to Supreme, Supreme Court, California Supreme Court has waited, and there's been trials, it's been a whole. I don't want to, debacle, no, it's not fair. It's been a long and winding process that is going to cost the city massive millions of dollars. One way or the other. So, this is a long way of me asking you, like, do you think the city should settle that case?
So, I think that it's gonna cost us either way.
Yeah, at this point.
And I, and so what's the lesser of two evils? Because if you settle, then you have to pay the attorney fees. Nobody's looking at that. And so, what is that number? As you, you know, as you say, okay, well, should we settle it? I don't think we should settle it, because then automatically, we have to pay these attorney fees. Don't we have enough stuff that we have to pay for already? I think that.
Uh, when I say settle, so I guess more, more, more interested in on you from is, do you think districting's a good idea?
We're eight point three square miles. Absolutely not. Would you have one mile and you have one mile and you probably, no. That's, no, utterly, we're too small.
Do you think if the population, so I just question on this, there was a point in time where the California legislature kicked around an idea. That if your city crossed a hundred thousand residents, you would go to districts automatically. Like, they kind of like, kicked that around. It didn't actually happen if someone they talked about. In terms of square, square footage of the city versus population. Do you think it's universally a bad idea just because the city's square mileage is too small? Or could you see a world where if we continue to build at rates that we're building at, and we increase our city's population over ten years? Like, is there a point where we get enough residents that you think districting might be valuable?
I would, at the, the least of concession would be rank choice voting. That, you know, that that would be something that would be comparable, but not districting.
Got it. So it's not, not, not something you you think is valuable to us. And, you know, just that sort of, and I don't say it's a litmus test, but it is a big point of discussion. Because the current city coun- whoever's on the city council in, when they get sworn in at the end of this year. We currently are a four-three vote to to fight the lawsuit, right? So it only takes one vote to flip, and we could settle that lawsuit come December, depending on the council, so. It's it's gonna be a, the real boots-on-the-ground decision council members are gonna make. Um, I guess just other, other topics, just real quick, because there are lots of other things around town. Um, I know pretty much everyone is universally, um, supportive of building a park at the airport. Or at least closing the airport and doing something else with it, but I just want to verify that I understand that from you as well, like. You don't, you don't think the airport should stay open? You're wholly committed to?
The park system, it being a park, that's what they voted on. But also, see. As my candidacy is run on those of the voices that are unheard. Why can't we repurpose the buildings that are there already? Into, you know what I'm saying, housing, or letting those businesses that are already there still exist. Because they're talking about the total wipeout of everything.
Right, housing, I mean, so this, I guess the answer to your question is LC, which was the vote people took. Uh, restricts uses on the land to a handful of things, of which housing isn't actually in the list, right? So, I I agree, I mean, you want to have a discussion on what goes on there, I guess that's an interest, it's an interesting point of contention. Which is, what should happen at the airport? If you think it should close, and I think most people, I think it's only maybe two candidates disagree, but let's say every candidate thinks it should close. And the follow-up question is, what should happen there? So, again, summarizing real quick what I heard you say there is, you think there should be a discussion around uses? That would include some, um, kind of housing, uh, business and parks and open space use? Got it. And again.
I mean, because the buildings are already there. They already exist. Why take out buildings when you can have something else take place? You know, that's without taking everything, I'll just wipe and slate clean, everything goes. And, you know, you take it, because we have the hangars there, the the Barker hangar. We have all these different things that are sitting there. Why not repurpose those things?
Yeah, I mean, it's for people to decide, right? But this council is, you know, there's a point, it's twenty twenty-eight, right? It's December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight, I think is our, our closure date. Um, so, it's going to be a topic of discussion for anyone that's elected in this cycle, although there's a question, they might. The, when does the vote actually get taken, right? Like, the vote's gonna be taken after the twenty twenty-eight election, but folks are gonna be interested in that. Um, so I went through a little bit of crime, went through a little bit of homelessness. I know we're we're coming up against some of our timing here. I guess I just want to touch on economic development real quick. Well, I should say that, there are other topics that people in the city care about. There's economic development, there's housing and development, there's environmental concerns. There's lots of other things. Of the topics that we haven't yet talked about, what are the ones that are still a priority for you? That you want to have an opportunity to talk about?
Economic development.
Okay, I don't want to, don't want to spike the gun and make it that one. But like, you know, some people might want to talk about housing and other things, it's fine. So what would you be doing to support the local economy? What can we do? I mean, tourism is down, this unquestionably tourism is down. We have issues around permitting. Permitting is difficult in town. The city claims it's not, that's wrong. Permitting is difficult. It absolutely is. Our tourism numbers are down. The tourists we have are less valuable to us as an economic resource.
Why do you say they're less valuable?
Because international tourists who stay overnight in high-end hotels contribute vastly more in TOT. They spend more in restaurants, they spend more in, um, the ancillaries that they purchase. Versus day trippers who are coming in from neighboring communities. And and it doesn't matter what the community is, I mean, they can day trip from Beverly Hills, but a day trip tourist who doesn't stay overnight in a hotel. Doesn't contribute as much to things like TOT, tax revenue. I also think that some of those folks who come in, particularly when they come in as a day trip, come in with a car. Which means that they are not necessarily going to be as committed to some of the food spending that an international tourist will. They're gonna bring, they might, you know, bring a bagel with them in the morning, not getting up at the hotel and going to the bagel store and buying a bagel.
Gotcha.
So, you know, I I I'd have to go and run my numbers on this, but I don't think I'm out on a limb by saying. The kinds of tourists we currently bring in contribute less than some of the tourists that we lost post-COVID. So, you know, where do we start with that? How do, how are you gonna improve the local economy? What what is it, what do you think the primary problem is, and what are you gonna do to solve it?
Well, like you said, you're streamlining our permitting process, that that's something that they're working on right now. But not fast enough for some of the businesses that are building here. When you have a holdup in that, you cost them thousands of dollars, money that they could have been used, you know, to open. So, when we streamline, like, it goes back to code enforcement, getting those things passed. Um, as I said, it needs to be a separation, because that also helps with our economic growth as well. We need these businesses to open. We need to have, expand our incubator program, which is something that we had at downtown Santa Monica. Where we had little carts for people to start their businesses. Or even as they doing an eighteen nineteen, we're on the ground floor, it's local businesses, people have a spot and a chance and an opportunity. To test their businesses out with not out being at high costs. But those are generating those tax dollars that we need. Everybody that is here needs to have an opportunity for their entrepreneurship to grow, and to them to establish their business. So if we do some things to keep them with resources that they need to keep their businesses, for them to open their business, number one. Number two, give them resources for them to sustain their businesses, then they expand out to a brick and mortar, and they have an opportunity to grow. And generate revenue for our cities. We also need to make sure that the businesses that we have right now, we give them what they need. For them to sustain the businesses that they have right now, because we're going back to our businesses and we're talking through the chamber. And as you're saying, people are having a problem with the permitting process. And as it's dragging and lagging out, and they're losing all that money, they're like, you know what? I could be somewhere else. For less money, and I could be open way sooner. So, we have to make sure that we curtail all of this right now. Not later. We can't kick the can down the street, because this is what's costing us money as well. And I also see that we've upped our parking meters for our economic growth. And I know that's like, wait, people getting ticketed is not good for economic growth. Once again, it is, because it's putting money, revenue into our city. Like, they slacked up on a lot of stuff.
Are you saying we we've increased enforcement of the parking meters?
Yes, yes. Not just the parking meters, where people blocking the driveways and all the stuff, all the stuff that you could do during COVID. It's a wrap, you know? I just hope they don't go back to ticketing, uh, buses, school buses.
Oh, for blocking lanes?
No, just, just, you know, the way, you don't ticket a school bus the same way that you do a regular residential person.
Got it. Um, okay, so I think, I mean, again, we could talk about stuff for more, but I think, I think we're riding up against our time, our time limit. And I appreciate you coming and taking the time to talk to us. And I appreciate you coming in and taking the time to talk to us. Is there something, so we talked, we hit economic development real quick. Was there anything else that you wanted to get to and talk about that we haven't had a chance to talk about yet?
Well, I think I would like to revisit one of the ideas that I had when I was on downtown Santa Monica.
And and I'll, I'll give you a chance to make a closing statement as well, just so you know. So you, two different things, right? So revisit a topic first, and then we'll go to a closing statement.
So we were gonna do arts in the alleys, to liven up some of downtown Santa Monica. But we also, we're gonna do it in partnership with Matika Wilburne, and do that on the backsides to liven up all the alleys. And when you have something like that, it's a tourist attraction. So as we were looking into that, also tying in the students from Santa Monica School District. And tying in the colleges as well. So basically, we have a top-ranked artists to teach our children. And also, when those children come out, their parents come out to revive some of the economy. We need to make sure that we, whatever decisions we make involve the community as well. Because some of these decisions that are making, being made or even put out, not community-driven.
Got it.
And even when we start talking about housing and new development, and people aren't involved, they get upset. Because you're taking away their rights and their voices, and that's not something I'm interested in.
Got it, cool. And I say, I could ask a bunch of follow-up questions, but we can't, we can't, you know, this can't be a two-hour conversation. But yeah, so why don't we transition, go into your closing statement a little bit? People have heard from you on some of these subjects, like, great, they're gonna get to here, see some of your answers as well, we're gonna put out some written questionnaires, information, all that kind of stuff. But for folks who who have watched this all the way to the end, like, what's your closing pitch to them? What's the the last thing you want to say to 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 voters?
It's kind of hard sometimes, just, you know what I'm saying, to come up like, after having such a long conversation. It's like, wait a minute, so now your closing statement is that I want people's voices to be heard. We have voices of people that are working three and four jobs, parents, as I'm one, that can't afford to stop and be at these meetings and all these different places, I want to be their voice. I want to be the voice of the people that are working hard, the people of the employees of these hotels, employees of these different businesses that are coming in, and even when we talk about mobility, I want answers that are gonna be also equitable for them as well, because they have to come in. Because when you come in in the morning and you look out on the freeway, there's some people coming in, that that's our workforce. We have to make sure their voices are heard as well, even though they don't live here, but they help our city run. So I want everybody's a seat at the table for everyone, so that we make sure we have equitable and thriving Santa Monica. They're safe.
Cool. Well, thank you, we appreciate you coming in today, and and, you know, we'll be putting all these out for folks to listen to at their leisure. Cool.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Matt. Look, as you can see, everybody's starting to call and all this stuff.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
You're like the dancing phone.